Courtney, do you know if I will need that same link when I present on next week to get in early? Or should my name be on the let in list?
I'm gonna let either David or someone from Conference Direct, but I'm thinking that that they have to put you on the list beforehand. So like I actually saw the join meeting button and I had like a little thing that said speaker only.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that's because for some somehow you were left out the list is what I'm thinking.
No problem.
Elizabeth, you should be listed as the primary speaker for next week. So
Okay.
I would have to think you're on that list.
Sounds good. I'm sure I am.
Do check it. Go to go to the the agenda on Pathable and and make sure, but.
Okay, I'll do that. Thanks, Dave.
I think you're you should be good for that session.
Very good.
Elizabeth, I recommend that you send your presentation to the Conference Direct staff and let them advance your slides for you.
Okay, that's good to know. I I just sent them today, but I don't know how to send them to Conference Direct.
We'll get them to Valerie.
All right.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Should should I tell our FDA speakers to hop on with the help desk because Mary Beth and Lori are still not able to get on? Or do we have advice for the FDA people?
If you can, if someone can send them that link that's in the chat, that should get them in.
Okay. I'm sending it now.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Carrie Poilo with Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade and Consumer Protection. I am one of the workshop co-chairs along with my partner Courtney. We want to welcome you today to the Program Standards Workshop via virtual. I know, excuse me, you are in the right place. So congratulations for getting here. There were some reminders. Julie, if you could go back to the previous slide, you'll see these reminders throughout the course of the conference. Before we get started, we just want to take a moment to ensure the following. We want to make sure your microphone is on mute unless you're actively speaking. We want to make sure that your camera is off unless you're actively speaking. And if you have questions during the sessions, we ask that you post them in chat on the right side of your screen. During the question and answer session, we will then cover those questions that come in and and get some answers for you folks. I do know we are waiting on our FDA speaker Lori, who was up first. I am not seeing her on yet. So let's just give it a brief moment and see if we can get her connected. So just hang tight for a minute or two. And like I said, you are here at the FDA or at the, I'm sorry, the CFP Workshop for the Program Standards. So welcome, everyone. So for the sake of time, I think we're going to go a little bit out of order in the agenda. Lori Farmer is having some difficulties getting in. So we're going to go ahead and start with the collaborative grant activities of the associations. Our first speaker is going to be Brenda Bacon, and I believe Julie is looking for that slide. Our first speaker will be Brenda Bacon. Brenda is the current vice chair for the conference, Chair of the Conference for Food Protection, and she is also the Director of Quality Assurance at Harris Teeter. Welcome, Brenda, and I'm excited to hear what you have to say.
Awesome. It is Friday the 13th, so that might be why Lori might be having a little bit of difficulty. It's a it's a pleasure to be with everybody today, and because we're going to take these a little out of order, I might give a little bit more explanation, but Lori will come back and cover some of this as we proceed forward. So if you'll advance the slide, please. So we have a collaborative that Lori will speak to, and part of the collaborative's work includes creating a National Food Code Adoption Strategy. And this is very important because it's, in our opinion, one of the building blocks to creating safer food and reducing instances of foodborne illnesses. So the collaborative does support the adoption of one of the the last two versions of the model FDA Food Code. And we had a work group that was pretty cross-functional among the collaborative that we used to help support food code adoption. And it can be accessed at the link that's presented on the board in front of you. Keeping in mind that there is not a cookie cutter answer because of the complexities that territories and states have in their food code adoption legislative procedures. So it isn't as if we can give you a playbook and say number one, number two, number three, number four. So the toolkit contains different tools, if you will, to allow the user to pull the ones out of the toolkit and use those to their advantage. Next slide, please. Some of the benefits of food code adoption, or a more recent version of food code adoption, certainly is the elimination of redundant processes. In in food establishments, it would be nice if there was one playbook, if you will, and not multiple playworks, depending on what jurisdiction you're in. It also allows the establishment of a more standardized approach to the inspections and the audits of these food establishments. Next slide. So you might ask, and I hope you do, what is in the toolkit? Well, there's the FDA Food Code Adoption Report, and there's a list of cross-cutting benefits for the industry and the regulatory agencies. There's a letter of support. Thanks. Call out to Sandra Craig in South Carolina for doing our letter of support. We hope to get more as we proceed down this path. There are testimonials. I apologize. There's a testimonial from Sandra Craig and letters of support from many regulatory in industry and academic authorities, as well as the collaborative members. It's very important for us to demonstrate that we all together are wanting to implement the the latest version or a more recent version of the food code. There's association policy statements. There's legislative data. Additionally, and who knew that COVID was going to break out about the same time we launched a survey? So while we did not get the response that we had hoped to get for the survey, we, due to limited resources and folks that were pulled away to to do COVID duty, if you will, the survey summary is very insightful and it is on this toolkit's webpage. There are links to resources and regular educational materials. There are scholarly articles. Some are somewhat dated, but they certainly do provide useful information. There are fact sheets, and there's links to the FDA assistance. And who do you contact to get more information? And there's other things on there, and we will continue because this is the living, breathing toolkit. We will continue to add information as more information comes available and is deemed to be useful in the toolkit. Next slide. And who's the toolkit for? Well, it's for food safety professionals. It's for the managers and the supervisors of the food safety programs. It's for retail food industry members, quality assurance folks, decision and policymakers, legislatures, and the association members. Next slide, please. You will see if you open up the collaborative's website and click on the Food Code Adoption Toolkit, you'll see a little A screen code with some tools in it. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see some click, quick links that you can click on to get to some of the areas that I spoke about a little bit earlier. Next slide, please. Take it away, Dr. McSwain.
Well, and actually, we have Lori on now, so we are going to stop the share and we are going to jump back and reorder our agenda. So we will.
And Carrie, I don't know if we want to give Lori a couple of minutes to just get, you know, settled, but Brenda, we did have one question in the chat. If you can see it, it says, can folks submit a tool for the toolkit?
There is an area on the webpage that you can submit comments, and the moderator of the webpage will forward that to the work group, which I'm the lead of that work group. And then the the work group will review that information and look at it and determine if it is applicable to the toolkit. So yes, there is a possibility for folks to provide information for us to include in the toolkit, and that can be done through that website.
Okay, are we seeing any other questions, Courtney? All right, so welcome, Lori. Lori Farmer is.
Thank you.
Yes, technology is great when it works, right? Up next, Lori is going to talk about the new era of smarter food safety and the new business models for and retail modernization. As you can see, Lori is the Director of the Office of State Cooperative Programs with the FDA Office of Regulatory Affairs. Welcome, Lori, and thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, Courtney. You guys, I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me? Okay, good. I'm getting a yes. And wow, technology. You know, we practiced this the other day, and it worked just fine. And our IT does different things in different parts of the country, so who knows? But I miss seeing you guys. I want to thank Carrie and Courtney and Angie and all of you who have this segment today. Also, Executive Director Dave McSwain for the invite. I mean, this is a really important session. So I'm looking at it, looking at my phone, so we'll just kind of see how this goes. And I'm, you know, we're all resilient. So thanks to everybody for being flexible here. My objectives today are for to talk to you, give you a little broad overview of new era smarter food safety, talk more about core element three, new business models and retail modernization, and then talk about the formation of the Retail Association Collaborative. So we're good on this new era slide. Okay. So you're a little step ahead of me, but that's fine. Let's stick on this slide. So this is really an exciting time to work in food safety because we're really on the edge of change. And really, some people are calling this a food revolution. There will be more changes in the food system in the next 10 years. Then there will be in decades to come. I mean, there are then that have been in previous decades. I'm telling you guys, there has been so much change. You guys know this. You're experiencing this. And to succeed in these modern times really, really need a modern approach, and that's what the new era smarter food safety is. It's really leveraging new and emerging technologies, simpler, more effective, and modern approaches and processes, leadership, creativity, and culture, and it's creating a more digital, traceable, and safer food system. The blueprint was really developed with input from inside the agency and with input from key stakeholders. So I I don't know if we're pressed for time, but I'm not really at that slide, so I'm happy to talk through where we're at. But you know, this is about building on what we're doing with the Food Safety Modernization Act and our commitment to the American people in the safety of our food system in the world. So our ultimate goal here is to significantly reduce the incidence of foodborne illness in this country. So let's stay right there on that slide. You guys know that the four core areas are tech-enabled traceability, smarter tools and approaches to prevention and outbreak response, new business models and retail modernization, and food safety culture. And these are the foundational pillars of the new era smarter food safety. It's really covering the range of technologies, analytics, business models, modernization, and values that are its building blocks. So I really want to emphasize that there is a lot of synergy among the four core components. An idea in one element may be relevant to another element. These elements work together and will bring us into the new era smarter food safety. So let's go to the next slide. Four core elements. That here is a more detailed picture of the core elements and their subcategories. And you know, what we're talking about is utilizing technology to do things such as more rapid traceback of food products when there's an outbreak. The goal is farm-to-table traceability. The faster that we can determine the problem, the quicker that we can address it. Looking at smarter tools for prevention and outbreak response, how can we really encourage root cause analysis to determine what causes outbreaks? How can we use technologies such as machine learning and artificial intelligence to strengthen our predictive analytics to prevent outbreaks? And how can we do a better job across the system with data sharing and collaboration? How can we work better and smarter with both regulatory agencies and industries? And how do we better notify customers, consumers about recalls? Food safety culture is a prerequisite to any food safety management system working effectively. We all know this in retail. How do we promote food safety culture within both the industry and regulatory worlds? How do we promote it within FDA and across the system? This includes working with consumer groups to promote food safety consumer education. So ready for the next slide where we talk more about element three? I am the co-lead for element three with Andres Keller in our Center for Food Safety and Applied Nutrition and a group of FDA leaders passionate about retail food protection. Retail has a tremendous stakeholder group, and everybody owns a piece of retail. This is the beauty of retail food protection, how we work collectively. And CFP is a perfect example of that. For us to be truly effective, we must engage stakeholders. There is a clear and intentional intersection of the new era and the work in the Retail Association Collaborative, which was discussed by Brenda a little earlier and will be discussed more further. So I want you to know that that is very deliberate. Let's move to the next slide. Ensuring food safety using new business models. COVID-19 has brought many changes for all of us. But in the food sector, it's how we buy our food. It's shift from dine-in restaurants and in-person grocery shopping to takeout delivery and online grocery shopping. It likely expanded to new customer demographic demographics, including elderly and other vulnerable populations who may have tried online ordering for the first time. When we look at e-commerce, one step that FDA is taking in the near term is planning a new business model summit, a public meeting with a variety of internal and external experts, including regulatory, industry, consumer groups, standard-setting organizations, to discuss and help determine how to best address new business models, including the food safety practices as well as potential vulnerabilities. FDA sees a need to better understand and clearly define e-commerce, regulatory and industry roles and responsibilities, identifying points of control or loss thereof of foodborne illness risks and inspection processes, and defining who owns the food in the last mile to the consumer. We will look at commodities, delivery platforms, food handling practices, delivery mechanisms, and existing and emergency emerging technologies. So mark your calendars. The summit, this virtual public meeting, will be held October 19th through the 21st. A save the date announcement is issued from FDA. A federal register announcement of this public meeting is projected to issue at the end of August, beginning of September. In addition, FDA will be issuing a request for information, asking specific questions around e-commerce. That is also estimated to issue around the same time as the public meeting announcement, late August, early September. A second area of focus is encouraging the use and development of smart kitchen technologies and equipment design. We will work with standard-setting stakeholders to facilitate the implementation of validated state-of-the-art technologies and equipment design. And we will conduct education campaigns that heighten consumer awareness, driving the incorporation of food safety standards within all new business models. And a third area of focus is to facilitate the safe development of new food ingredients and production technologies to foster innovation while focusing on safety. Another area where we need expert engagement inside and outside the agency. So more to come on that. So the next slide, please. We also need to modernize our approach to traditional retail food safety. This involves looking at the effectiveness of our current programs and collaborating with CDC and other state and local regulatory partners to how to better ensure the control of foodborne illness risk factors at retail. This is an assessment of the national U.S. retail regulatory system and looking at effectiveness towards meeting our public health goals. This includes talking, taking a look at our current strategies in reducing and preventing foodborne illness in retail, how we all work together towards that end, and determine what we're doing well and what we can do better. We'll also be exploring how to advance facility and equipment design as a preventive control at retail, including encouraging the development and use of commercial smart kitchen equipment, that capability and the monitoring and temperature process. You will hear more today about our work to increase uniform adoption of the FDA Food Code by state, local, tribes, and territories, and retail food protection. And I think you heard a little bit about that from Brenda already. The thinking here is a few key areas. Improve our focus on using risk-based methodologies and root cause analysis in our inspections and investigations. Facilitate the implementation of well-developed food safety management systems throughout the retail food industry. The results of the FDA Risk Factor Study tell us that those facilities that have a well-developed food safety management system have fewer occurrences of foodborne illness. And then we're going to implement intervention strategies that positively impact food safety behaviors and practices. So now I'm going to shift gears and go to the next slide and talk a little bit about a shared vision, a shared vision among many. This has been a 20-year conversation that many of you have been part of, and it has finally come to fruition, and it is the Retail Food Safety Regulatory Association Collaborative. And in short, we call it just the collaborative, and I'm going to focus on the formation of this group. And others today will talk about the specific projects. So let's go to the next slide. So as I'm focusing on the formation of this group, you know, the lift in retail is too vast for us to do alone. To be effective, we must do it together. The work together with partners will create the multiplier effect. Our first meeting of this group was held June of 2019, and we called it a Retail Associations Summit. And we could not have pulled this off without the leadership of many in FDA, including John Marcello, Glenda Lewis, Alan Tartt, and Janet Williams, as well as the executive directors and leadership of the associations and CDC. I want you to know that the planets have aligned with the formation of this collaborative. It couldn't be a better time to do this. We have the right people in the right leadership roles that want to see this progress of working together towards our common goal. And this is an alignment and commitment that came well before any FDA funding incentives were discussed. Next slide. Frank Yanis joined us for our first meeting where we shared information about each organization, and we looked for commonalities in our priorities. Our common goal is the reduction of foodborne illness, as evidenced by the reduction of foodborne illness risk factors. And we spent time brainstorming what we could do collectively to work towards that goal. Next slide. There were some common themes that came out of that meeting. And they were, you know, we all have the challenge of limited resources. Everybody on the phone. Everybody on the phone here has those. We know that really to meet our goals, we need to focus on modifying behaviors. An important aspect is standardization's conformance and food code adoption. They're vital to this process. And we need to do a better job of telling our story. You know, we're scientists. We're generally not really effective, we're not marketing people. So we need to do a better job of telling what we're doing. And this collaborative is about building on each other's strengths. So let's go to the next slide. So this initial summit, this face-to-face meeting was about finding common ground and ensuring agreement on our strategic goal. Then we established our own governance, that included the recognition that we are each equal partners. It doesn't take away from our own autonomy, and we will leverage and build on strengths. We will define specific goals to work on together. Let's go to the next slide. So after the AFTO Healthy People 2030 meeting, the collaborative reconfirmed and validated our commitment to our short-term goals and then developed long-term objectives that would impact the retail food-related goals of Healthy People 2030 that you can see on the slide. So the next slide is where we landed with our priorities in the Retail Regulatory Association Collaborative. One, develop a food code adoption toolkit and implementation strategy. We've heard some about that today. Two, identify, assess, and promote intervention strategies with both industry and regulatory. Three, building on FDA service delivery strategy, developing a national integrated strategy to provide the multiplier effect for our retail standards, our technical assistance. This is going to be discussed more today. Four, assess application of risk-based inspections by states, locals, tribes, and territories. Regulatory jurisdictions, you'll hear more about that too today. Develop a way to easily share information and strategies to promote and connect available resources among states, locals, tribes, and territories, and our retail stakeholders. Develop a strategy to better tell our stories. For our marketing people, this is developing a story brand and sharing the tools and successes of the state, local, tribe, and the territories' retail programs. And issue joint recommendations on emerging issues where we can. So the last slide is, as you listen to the next presentations, I want you to check out the collaborative's website. Give feedback on resources, and please share any resources you have. Participate in information gathering conducted by the associations. The work is designed to further the implementation of food safety management systems, facilitate the use of risk-based inspection methodology, and to identify intervention strategies that positively impact behavior change. Act on the opportunities to rebuild the infrastructure of your retail food regulatory protection program that are supported by the retail flexible funding model. And engage your retail food specialists as a resource that can be supported, that can support the needs of your retail food regulatory program. The FDA Retail Food Protection website is on the slide. It includes many resources. It also includes an ability to find your retail food specialists. I would hope that you all know who that FDA retail specialist is. But if for some reason you don't, please look on this website. We also have a link to the Retail Regulatory Association Collaborative. And lastly, I want to bring your attention to the FDA Virtual Retail Seminar that will be held the week of September 13th. I want to thank AFTO for your generosity of the management of the meeting platform. And we know, we all know how challenging that can be. The detailed information about the meeting, including the agenda, is on the AFTO website, afto.org. And we are getting it put on the FDA Retail Food webpage as well. So attending this virtual meeting is free, but we need to know you're attending, so please register. So I want to thank you in advance for your engagement with the collaborative, and thank you for the opportunity to share today. So I'll stop there and try and figure out how to turn my camera off if it's on and put myself on mute. Thank you, Carrie. I see you.
Yes, well, thank you, Lori. So much wonderful information. It was very helpful explanation, so it was a great agenda item. Thanks for joining us, Lori. We're now going to kind of circle back and discuss those collaborative grant activities of the different associations. So following Brenda is Dr. David McSwain. As we all know, Dr. McSwain is the Conference for Food Protection Executive Director. He is going to discuss Conference for Food Protection and their role. Welcome, Dr. David McSwain.
Thank you, Carrie, and it's a pleasure to be here. Hopefully everyone can hear me well. At this point, I really would like to take just the next few minutes to provide some highlights of the role of CFP and that it's had. Obviously, the time is short, so we're simply going to touch on a few things. I want to give a couple of examples of things we've done sort of in the big sense as far as our participation in the collaborative. And then I will focus more on our work in conjunction with NHO on objective number two. So if we could have the next slide, please. As has been mentioned, CFP has actually been a member of the collaborative since its inception. One of the first activities that was undertaken was to identify, through a consensus-building process, what was considered to be some of the primary activities or objectives that the collaborative would be involved with. While we all had great ideas of lots of things that an organization like this could pursue, the resources and the size of the group obviously impose certain kinds of limitations. So in that sense, we were, we tried to make the best of what we could do by synergistically combining our resources and hopefully produce a lot of outcomes. I think one of the things that has been mentioned before in this session this afternoon is that we are approaching this from a collaborative perspective and that we want to have participations from a variety of different stakeholder groups that are either involved with or impacted by retail food safety activities. And I think certainly CFP is in a very strategic position in order to do that. As our membership is comprised of regulators at all levels, not only within the U.S., but also U.S. territories. We have food industry professionals that represent the broad spectrum of retail establishments, including food stores, restaurants, vending, the groups that are involved in the processing and transportation of these products, as well as a lot of industry organizations that provide support services to these sort of key components. We also have a significant membership from academia who are doing research and teaching and training in the area of retail food safety, either as part of an environmental health or public health program, or specifically through culinary arts. And we also have representation of the major consumer organizations that are involved specifically with issues that deal with food safety in general and retail food safety in particular. So if we could have this next slide. As you said, the first objective dealt with the adoption of a national food code strategy as well as the toolkit. Brenda is, has made that presentation very nicely. And I, but I did want to give credit to her as vice chair of the Conference for Food Protection. She assumed this leadership role and in fact is really the primary individual within the collaborative. I would argue that that really comes from the retail food industry. And we think it's really good to have someone like her in that role. And we certainly hope to see the involvement of the food industry representatives get much larger in this process later on. She's done a great job of describing what the functions of that particular work group are, as well as to give you some highlights on the food code adoption toolkit. So with that, I'm going to simply ask that we move on to the next slide, which deals more specifically with objective number two. Objective two, that has been identified, the primary aim of that objective is to improve the regulatory approach competency and food safety culture in the regulatory community. There really are sort of two subsets of objectives within that one larger objective. The first one is to increase retail food safety programs that are applying risk-based inspection methods. And as I said before, this is something that CFP and NHO are working on cooperatively in order to try to create, hopefully, a foundation that will make it easier for jurisdictions to apply this method of inspection. The activity is designed to increase the number of programs that do follow risk-based inspections and also follow up those with effective intervention strategies to control risk factors that have been identified during the inspections. As you know, FDA now for several years has been following and doing studies. They did a baseline study on factors contributing to foodborne illness. And then they have done subsequent studies periodically to see if things are changing and trends are changing. Unfortunately, we're seeing that these problems are still problems. And in many instances, the nature of the problem is, has not changed all that significantly. This activity is designed specifically to dovetail with the aspect of the new deliverables, that new era deliverables, I should say, 3.2.7, which is to increase the use of risk-based inspection and are consistent with the provisions of Annex V of the Food Code. So we could have the next slide. As I mentioned, there were sort of two sets of objectives within the one objective. And in this one, what we're dealing with is our attempt to try to find, you know, ways of increasing the application of the risk-based inspection methods by our state, local, tribal, and territorial regulatory food programs. We are trying to, through our surveys, are trying to identify what are the common barriers that these agencies and programs are experiencing when attempting to implement risk-based inspections. And also, we are looking at the same organizations who maybe have been more effective in their ability to implement these kinds of inspections. And how have they overcome those barriers? Whether they're resource issues, whether it's time management issues, whether simply getting buy-in from those facilities that they are inspecting. You know, there are a lot of different things that can either be a barrier or can be a key to accomplishment in reducing the challenges and barriers associated with the implementation of this type of inspection program. Next slide, please. Again, NHO and CFP have been involved, as we said. Our function primarily is doing key informant interviews where we send out a written survey and follow up with a telephone survey. The groups of agencies that we initially surveyed were selected because they had completed verification audits dealing with standards three, four, and six of the voluntary retail program standards, as you know. And AFTO, as I'm sure Elizabeth is going to talk about a little bit later, is doing something similar with state regulatory food programs. So we hope that information gathered from both sets of interviews will be beneficial as we move forward in trying to achieve the goal associated with this objective. Next slide, please. I am going to just touch on this again. As part of this objective number two, we did create a food safety advisory group, which was formed. It is designed to provide feedback not only to CFP and NHO, but to all of the collaborative project leadership that deals with the various segments. Now, Chelsea Gridley Smith is going to be talking about this in more detail. But I did want to at least emphasize that CFP and NHO were the two organizations that were primarily responsible for the creation. But certainly, NIH, AFTO, FDA, CDC has also used this group effectively to get feedback on the various projects that they're working on as part of the collaborative. All right, and the last slide. Again, some additional things we've done. Obviously, we are actively involved in the meetings of the collaborative. We also have worked closely and have had CFP members who are active in the communications work group. Vicki Everly has been involved in helping to develop the communications plan. We, as an organization, have created ways of sharing information about the collaborative with our membership, using our listserv and the website. And certainly, we have reviewed, as part of the communications work group, requests that are submitted by other organizations for posting information on the website and other channels within the collaborative. And next slide. And again, I guess, I think this is now when Chelsea will take over. And I appreciate the opportunity for being part of this panel this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Dr. McSwain. It was a pleasure listening to you and what the Conference for Food Protection is doing. Our next speaker is going to be Dr. Chelsea Gridley Smith. She is the Director of Environmental Health at the National Association of County and City Health Officials, better known as NHO. Welcome, Dr. Gridley Smith.
Thanks so much, and thanks again for the opportunity to present and share with your audience today. We are really excited about being members of the collaborative, and it's always just a source of renewed enthusiasm when we hear folks like Lori Farmer talk about the introduction and the conception of this, of this group, and really what we're designed to do and what a true honor it is to be part of this collaborative. So today, I'll walk you through just a little bit, a snippet of some of the activities we're doing on top of and in partnership with our partners here at Conference for Food Protection. Next slide, please. So to learn more about effective intervention strategies, we went back to standard nine, which is outlined here on this slide. And conformance to standard nine showcases a program's ability to conduct and analyze the data from a risk factor study for the purposes of designing and implementing a targeted intervention strategy. And this is all to address the occurrence of risk factors identified in the study. Further, programs must evaluate the effectiveness of the strategy through a subsequent risk factor study. Next slide. And in 2018, NHO conducted an assessment of the continuous improvement of retail food safety, looking at programs' use of the standards as a tool for fostering continuous improvement. Of those that reported conducting a risk factor study, 81% also reported that they analyzed that data, you can see in the middle bar. Of those that analyzed the data, the bottom bar, 40% had not yet developed a targeted intervention strategy. In an effort to identify barriers to developing and implementing targeted intervention strategies, and also strategies to overcome those barriers, NHO and CFP are conducting key informant interviews with programs who have conformed to standard nine with a verification audit. Next slide, please. And that is, leads us right into the goal from the collaborative here, which is to identify, assess, and promote implementation of effective intervention strategies. Next slide. And this activity includes reviewing, analyzing, and collating retail food risk factor study reports and conducting key informant interviews with sites that meet a set of criteria. The criteria includes having verified standard nine, as well as having conducted ideally one or more risk factor study, and then sharing the effective intervention strategies through report outs and infographics and of the sort. Some key themes in our key informal interviews and questions really go around how folks identified and prioritized risk factors, or how the identified risk factors were prioritized, and what and how were intervention strategies selected and implemented, and were the intervention strategies evaluated for success? And if so, how? Questions also probe for lessons learned in this process, and what, if anything, would make the process easier or more streamlined. Next slide, please. Through this approach, we anticipate to generate the listed outputs and outcomes you see here. So outputs include, you know, identifying practical approaches to develop and implement. intervention strategies, successfully implemented risk factor intervention strategies and report findings. We also, the intended outcomes is to improve SLTT retail food regulatory programs' knowledge of an approach to implement effective intervention strategies to reduce foodborne illness risk factors. So we are in the middle of the process here. We've, I think we finally concluded all of our key informal interviews. So if you happen to be one of those sites that we interviewed, thank you very much for your participation. And now we're moving on to the analysis phase of this project, and we will conclude with report outs. So make sure you book our retail collaborative webpage to be on top and the first one to hear about our 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 report findings as we release them. And now I believe I will pass it to Elizabeth with AFTO. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Chelsea. Great work that is being done by NHO. As Chelsea mentioned, our next speaker with talking about the grant activities, the collaborative grant activities, is Elizabeth Nutt. So Elizabeth Nutt actually joined the staff of AFTO, the Association of Food and Drug Officials, as the project manager for the Retail Food Safety Regulatory Association Collaborative Grant. She's going to talk a little bit about what they have done. Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you very, very much. I'm very excited to be a part of this group and be able to present to you today about what AFTO's done. And I'm going to be talking, as everybody's mentioned, there are several objectives to the collaborative. There basically are six main objectives with multiple tasks associated with each objective. And the the four agencies either have a lead role or a supportive role in each one of those objectives. So I'm going to focus my presentation today on the objective three, which is the program standards. And as you can see there on the slide, we are trying to increase the enrollment and active participation, the application of the retail food regulatory standards. So next slide, please. The way I went about this project is I developed a survey tool that really touched on a lot of the aspects of several of the objectives, but in this particular presentation, I'm going to be, as I focusing on what I gleaned from the interviews on the program standards. So how I started out is I went to the FDA list of enrolled jurisdictions. I think Lori Farmer might have mentioned that in her presentation, but there is a list of enrolled jurisdictions in the standards, and it tells what standards have been self-assessed and what standards have been verified. And they update this this list about every three months, I believe. So if you are enrolled in the program standards, I would recommend that you get in touch with your retail food specialists to make sure that all your work is being recognized and updated on that particular list. So that gave me a sense of where each one of the agencies was that I was going to be interviewing. So I sent email invites and Zoom invites to all the state food regulatory programs in groups of about eight to twelve. I didn't want to overwhelm myself. So it took me about four months to get all those interviews done and get them entered into Survey Monkey, and we are now just now beginning to analyze that data. And I'm going to be sharing, again, as I said, the data that I got from, based on the program standards. The questions that I asked were enrollment status, self-assessment and verification status, barriers and benefits. So I'll go into that a little bit more detail. So next slide, please. So I conducted a total of sixty-two interviews, which I'm happy to say was one hundred percent of the pool. Everybody responded. I was so happy about that. I I knew many of you already, but I made several new friends with the interviews. I hope that you all enjoyed them as much as I did. I think some of you are probably on the call. But mainly, I was interviewing the state food programs for health departments or Department of Agriculture and asked them various questions in relation to the standards. So next slide, please. So of the sixty-two agencies that that I interviewed, fifty-four agencies are enrolled in the standards with thirty-three having current self-assessments. I think this is pretty good. That's my personal opinion, because for the past two years, year and a half, as you know, we've been dealing with quite a few challenges. So I think these numbers show are good, but it does show that we can work as a collaborative together to help agencies achieve these goals even more. So next slide, please. Some of the barriers to the to enrollment and and doing self-assessment are have been mentioned before. Staffing and turnover is quite prevalent in in our world of regulation. Of course, COVID-19 was probably one of the biggest barriers because many of the field staff in these programs were pulled into COVID-19 duties. So that kept people from maintaining or doing self-assessments. Funding is an issue. Some of the agencies have different priorities. They have mandates to do their inspection work and follow-up work and compliance and enforcement work. And then some of the reasons where the states don't actually do the inspection work, locals are enrolled. So, you know, those those numbers can can probably be analyzed a little bit further and and maybe asterisk to say that of the sixty-two agencies, only X number are relevant to the standards. But I I think there's a way to get everybody involved in the standards. So, but many did say that when things get back to normal, that they definitely will be getting more back into looking at the program standards and 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 working more towards that. So the next slide, please. So I did ask inquired about the verification audits, and this was a little bit more challenging. Thirty agencies were shown to have current audits. And again, some of the same barriers are there with time, staffing, funding, and one of the areas is finding qualified auditors, auditors that have the time to do it. And and so we are going to be working with the our collaborative partners to try to help in this area as well. But I was very encouraged when I moved on to my next question. You can move to the next slide, please. Benefits to participating in the standards. Every every agency I dealt with, you know, had some good things to say about the standards, goal setting, measuring measurement of success, taking their taking their case to legislators to get funding and additional staffing and people, accountability and benchmarking. The the program standards help with FAB accreditation. So I the standards are are good. They they the I think the work that the program committee for CFP does is very beneficial in helping with programs meet standards and make the standards more understandable and and achievable. So I'm very excited about this this collaborative work that we're doing to work on the standards. So the next slide is really our my wrap-up slide. It's our next steps. And as we get further into the process, you know, AFTO is going to be working with our partners, CDC, FDA, CFP, NIH, and NHO. I forgot NHO on there. My apologies. Very key partners there. And we're going to be developing strategies to help with enrollment, self-assessments, and verification audits. At this time, I'm working on creating a survey that's going to be distributed to look for auditors that are willing and able to to provide audits, what experience they've had in doing audits. Some of these audits are done remotely. Some of them are done on-site. I think this whole technology world is really opening up opportunities for, you know, better adherence to getting audits done because you don't have to travel and that kind of thing. And I've heard a lot of success stories with some of the virtual audits that are being conducted, whether they've attended the the workshops that FDA provides, the self-assessment workshops, the verification audit workshops, very beneficial to getting good qualified auditors. One of the things that we found, and I'll give kudos to NHO and CFP, I think they're working in this area, is program standard networks. There's just been kind of a grassroots effort with some of the jurisdictions, locals and states, territories and tribes, that they are, they've kind of created these little program standard networks where they kind of get together and and help each other, compare tips and tricks, lessons learned. So I'm really excited about pursuing these program standard networks to really push adherence and compliance and, you know, application of the program standards. And I don't, we're going to try to do some webinars in the future to to present all these materials as well, so be on the lookout for that. And I don't know that this was mentioned yet, but the NHO mentorship program is still, I believe, being offered. So I was involved in the mentorship program many, many years ago when I worked for the Tulsa Health Department. And it's an excellent way to get mentors and mentees together to share tips and tricks and tools and sometimes face-to-face and seeing seeing these things live and in action is very, very helpful. And then I think we're going to hear a little bit more about the flexible funding that FDA provides to help jurisdictions, whether it's developing tools, hiring staff, or sending staff to training in regards to the program standards. So I think that the future is just looking very bright, as Lori said. The the changes, I think, coming out of the collaborative are going to be exponential. And it's it's a big team. We can't do this without not only the collaborative partners, but all the state, local, tribal, territory partners that we're going to be, you know, leaning on for for help and and assistance. So that concludes my presentation, and I believe Mr. Rance Baker with NIH will be presenting next.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. Fascinating, great update on the survey results. I know my section chief actually participated in one of those interviews. So yes, yes, kudos to you.
They were really fun. I really, I hope everybody had as much fun as I did because I just think it was really a good a good opportunity to learn about people and, like I said, meet new friends. I hope I see him in person someday.
Yes, oh, me as well. Our final organization or association that is going to be discussing their collaborative grant activities is NIH. And representing NIH will be Rance Baker. Rance is the director, is the director at NIH or the National Environmental Health Association, and he heads up the entrepreneurial zone. Welcome, Rance, and thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Carrie. You know, as I see the the list of everybody's name that's on there for that Zoom call, I am just jonesing to see you guys again. It's, and getting to see some of the names there, I'm, you know, I I grew up in the South and we hug everybody, and and I think my arms are going to be sore when we finally do get it back together again and 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 get a chance to see each other there. So welcome. Thank you for being here today. I think I'm doing cleanup today, but I don't think anybody's on base because everybody hit home runs so far. So I'm, which is doing a lot better than my team, the Rockies, especially when they're on the road. Today, I'm going to be talking about objective six, and it's going to be fairly simple talk because it's about the communication. I think everybody has already brought up how the website is, is, you know, the website is the tool that the collaborative is using and other social media places to get this information out there. So mostly, my goal today is to get you to go to that website or to do the social media that we have out there, just to be able to see what it is we're doing and also to use the function there. So next slide, please, Carrie. NIH has added a full-time communication specialist that is just working on a collaborative project. Taryn Lynn has done an incredible job, and we're really thrilled to have her on board. They are working on creating things that are innovative. There are a number of multimedia tools, and it's designed to be both approachable and accessible. One of the goals is designing the communication tool was to ensure that communication is coming in from the stakeholders and is, which is a key element of what it is that we want to accomplish there. And they've set up a communication to make sure that the right message in the right style is is being delivered for each of the communication channels there. So next slide, please. So here's a, here's a page on the collaborative website there. It's constantly evolving. And if you look at the homepage, it's being updated with the release of recent projects or products from the collaborative, and it highlights them to keep the page fresh. There's a tools and resource page, which brings together existing resources from around the web and new products that are being created by the collaborative. There's available funding opportunities, which is always very important to everybody there, and and that's hopefully is a driver for people to come to the site as well. They're insucceful through the website. And stakeholders can contact the collaborative directly from the website or sign up to join our mailing list on that. You know, as you look at some of those numbers up there for the last ninety days there, look at the Food Code Adoption Toolkit. It's been viewed one thousand four hundred times in the last ninety days. This lets you know that what what they're they're working on, what the other groups are really diving into is a really important project there. So that's one of the most exciting numbers that we have up there. So let's go to the next page, Carrie. So one of the key events we had was the ribbon-cutting ceremony to announce the collaborative and give people the feeling for its purpose and and the feeling for its mojo, and and it was a great success there. It was a live stream event and featuring an overview of the collaborative with video remarks from a large group of today's key food safety leaders, many of them who are in the room today. Most of them spoke to you as well before I came on. And besides just being a live event, it was very well-choreographed by the communication and videography crew there. So I recommend, if you get a chance, check it out. There were five hundred and seventeen live viewers, and it has sent a number of people to the collaborative website with one hundred and seventy-five new users just since the ribbon-cutting came out. Let's go to the next slide, Carrie. Social media and emailing list there. Again, look at these numbers there. Let me give you a few seconds just just to go through them. And remember, this is fairly new engagement for for this website here. So we're growing at a rate of fifty followers per month, and usually have, usually two informational emails are going out each month, and our open rate is twenty-one percent, which is really good. So let's, next slide there, Carrie. So here's, here's how you get in touch with the collaborative. We encourage engagement and interaction with our stakeholders, again, on this. And so again, the goal isn't just to be a communication-going-out portal there, and we hope for this to be a social platform that's revisited on a frequent basis because the valuable new information is being put there on a regular basis there. Carrie, then we're going to go to the last slide there for us. Here's an example of a current project for us. So the collaborative is looking for the best tools and resources the regulatory programs are using to prepare for and respond to foodborne illness outbreaks. This is just part of our aim to provide innovative approaches to assist with responding effectively to outbreaks. There are a lot of great resources out there, and it's our hope to to build a repository of the tools so that others don't need to create something whole cloth. And I recommend that if you have resources you want to share, that you visit the website and help another jurisdiction out. And Carrie, that that wraps me up. I hope I made it to at least first before I get thrown out.
No, thank you, Rance. Thank you for sharing what NIH has been working on. Again, I just love hearing about all the projects and the collaborative activities. Moving on and switching gears a little bit, if you would like to go to the next slide, please. We are going to welcome Tiara Smith from NHO. She is a program analyst for the National Association of County and City Health Officials or NHO. She is actually going to talk a little bit during the workshop about the Retail Food Advisory Group, really about the formation and expectations. So welcome, Tiara.
Thank you so much, Carrie. All right. So as Carrie just mentioned, I am going to give some information on the Retail Food Safety Advisory Group, specifically around the formation and the expectations of the group. So next slide, please. All right, so first I'm going to start with the purpose of their advisory group. So first, the advisory group is a collaborative approach toward retail food safety. So within this group, members are working together with their peers and with stakeholders to share ideas, discuss challenges experienced within retail food safety and best practices, maximize effectiveness and reach. Members of the advisory group are located all over the country and sharing not just perspectives of their particular organizations, but also perspectives that may be shared by other organizations within specific states or regions. So this group is allowing us to learn what's happening within retail food safety nation. So this group is allowing us to learn what's happening within retail food safety nationwide. And from there, we can identify gaps in resources, communications, et cetera. And finally, the purpose of the group is to leverage their impact toward the advancement of collaborative objectives. This advisory group is allowing the participants to directly provide input on guidance and resources that will be developed as part of the collaborative. Next slide, please. So the Retail Food Safety Advisory Group consists of 15 state, local, and territorial health department professionals, academic food safety professionals, and retail food industry professionals and retail food association staff. Specifically, there are local and state regulatory members, industry members, including food industry, food safety consultants, and industry associations, and also academic food safety professionals. The group also has two co-chairs. And their main role is to provide, is to do some facilitation during the meetings. I mean, to walk the group through the various agenda items during the meetings. Next slide, please. Oh, and I'm sorry, I meant to mention in regards to membership, members of the group were selected through an application process. So members completed an act, an application and were selected based on their current position and duties and or responsibilities related to retail food safety, their overall food safety experience, and their experience with the FDA retail program standards. So these are two aims that the advisory group will advise NACO and CFP on, but there are actually six aims that they are advising on. And those aims are to support, promote, and encourage complete adoption of one of the latest two FDA food codes by state, local, tribal, and territorial retail regulatory programs, to increase retail food regulatory program application of risk-based inspections and implementation of effective intervention strategies, increase enrollment and active participation in and application of the retail program standards by state, local, tribal, and territorial retail food regulatory programs, develop and implement training, outreach, educational materials and opportunities, and other innovative approaches to assist state, local, tribal, and territorial regulatory jurisdictions with reducing the occurrence of foodborne illness, risk factors in food establishments, and responding more effectively to foodborne illness outbreaks, increasing the number of establishments that have well-developed and implemented food safety management systems, and finally, to develop a strategy to enhance communication around retail food safety issues and resources. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Retail Food Safety Advisory Group members will serve on the group for two project years. The first project year is from December 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2021. And the second project year will be from August 1st, 2021 through July 31st of next year, 2022. And for each project year, members are expected to participate in at least five virtual advisory group meetings a year. And the meetings are typically one to two hours and potentially one in-person meeting a year. Members are also expected to do work between meetings, such as reviewing documents and providing feedback, et cetera. Next slide, please. All right. So these are the main activities of the advisory group. And I'll provide an example of how they've done some of these things so far. So first, review and advise on protocols and findings for an assessment of the application of risk-based inspection methods by state, local, tribal, territorial, retail food regulatory programs. An example of that so far, as some of the folks who presented before me have discussed, we've conducted key informant interviews on risk-based inspection methods. And the group has, has been able to provide input on interview questions and guides to make sure that we are collecting the information that we need, and that would be most helpful. Another activity is to review and advise on protocols and findings related to identifying, assessing, and promoting implementation of effective intervention strategies by retail food regulatory programs. Again, that's another, that's another goal that we we conducted key informant interviews for. And the group was great about reviewing the questions and making sure that we have the information that we need to get the feedback that we're seeking. Another activity is to review and advise on protocols and findings related to building upon FDA's retail program standards, technical assistance strategy to provide a multiplier effect to promote participation and implementation of the retail program standards by state, local, and tribal and territorial groups. So an example of that, we are currently working on developing questions and a guide for focus groups. And so as we develop that, that will be a future agenda item for the group to review the questions for the focus groups and a guide as well. Next slide, please. And a couple other activities, promote summary report and findings from grant activities as requested. I believe on the, just on our last advisory group hall, the group was able to review a draft report that we've developed, and they are able to use track changes and things to put their input directly into those documents. And then we discuss any potential changes and and feedback on the calls. And finally, another activity is providing recommendations on effective methods and channels to communicate information regarding the project to various stakeholder groups involved in retail food safety. So this is also really important as, you know, these folks are in the field and they can advise us on how best to get this information and guidance out to other folks. They can let us know how they usually receive information. And so they will be providing recommendations and input on that. All right. I believe that is all from me. Up next is Mary Beth Neeson with FDA.
Thank you so much, Tiara. Sounds like an interesting group. So next up, we're going to have, here from Mary Beth Neeson from the FDA. She is going to talk about the Retail Flexible Funding Model. Mary Beth is a Consumer Safety Officer with the US FDA, and she has worked prior to that for 13 years as an investigator in Cincinnati. So I would like to welcome Mary Beth, and you can see her on the Brady Bunch screen. She has got her camera on. So take it away, Mary Beth. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So I'm glad to be here to provide some information to you all. To just so you know, there won't be any slides only because information is changing rapidly daily. On behalf of FDA and our cooperative partner, Nihal, we are very excited about the Retail Flexible Funding Model that will be coming out this fall. As many of you know, maybe be all of you know, you know, the other wonderful funding sources that we have utilized in the past to help our retail program standards partners work on their activities will be sunsetting and will be moving into the Retail Flexible Funding Model. We are working diligently inside FDA, and Nihal is is working their tails off and doing a wonderful job at being ready to invite you all in to apply in the fall for the portal. There's some bits of information that may be helpful to those of you out there. One is there are presentations available. If you haven't had a chance to to listen to my Southern Twine give a presentation on the Retail Flexible Funding Model over the last several months, you are welcome to reach out to your retail food specialist. They have a copy of one that you can certainly watch and be entertained by that southern draw of mine and get yourself information about the Retail Flexible Funding Model and get an idea for your jurisdiction, what you might like to do when the portal opens and how you'd like to apply for your jurisdiction for some grant funding. Please know that the last several months, and we will continue to do so with our partner, Nihal, FDA is working on our side of the house to provide lots of information through our retail food specialists. So if you haven't received information, which I'm sure that you have because they are feverishly working to get things out for you guys to assist you in your decision-making for the fall. You can also reach out to Nihal. They have their website up, which is nihal.org backslash retail grants with an S. And that's your one-stop shop for information, and it is updated often. So you will have access to not only guidance and information about what's coming down the pike for the portal and its opening, but in addition, there are some resources where you can contact people for support and answer questions that you may have today or in the future. One thing I want to make sure that is very clear for everyone that's out there, anybody that's interested in applying, whether you are a seasoned veteran or whether this is something very new for you, or whether it's just new and nervous for those that have applied in the other forms that we've used in the past, and this is something new. Ladies, don't let your heart be troubled. We are doing our best at FDA and Nihal to ensure that this is a smooth transition. We know that there are a variety of different types of people out there. You can see from the background of my picture, many of you may recognize what that is. For those that don't, it is, it's the Magic Kingdom. You know, I know that everyone is different. I take my six-year-old into Magic Kingdom, hand him a map, and he says, woo-hoo, Magic Kingdom, let's get going. And we are out the door. That's all he needs is the map. He doesn't need any more information. He's good to go with just the directions, and and we're set. Then we have my four-year-old, who is my question man, smart as a whip, photographic memory, and he will ask questions because he needs to know details. He needs specifics. He needs to know what we're riding first, second, third, what's for lunch, who's going with us, where's the bathroom stop? He needs all the information so that he can make the important decisions on what he wants to ride, where he wants to go. We know that that exists for all humans, right? It's not just the six and the four-year-old. So what we've put in place, of course, is portal guidance will be coming out. Lengthy guidance with extreme details for those people that just need the map, right? We also know that there's people that some things may be shaky, maybe they're not used to applying for grants, or they want to make sure they're doing the very best job they can. Or maybe there's something a little wonky they hadn't seen before that that they can't quite get through. You're going to have the support, of course, of your retail food specialists as always, but Nihal has SMEs that they have trained for the Retail Flexible Funding Model. They have trained for this grant portal. You'll be able to call at a 1-800 number, which is live today on their website. You'll also be able to email and get feedback on any questions you may have when the portal opens and how it works and that sort of thing. I would encourage you, regardless of whether you're the six-year-old or the four-year-old, that you utilize whatever tools you feel like you need to make this a success. As always, the retail food specialists at FDA are here to help you. I am here to help you. Nihal is here to help you. We believe that this will be extremely successful and extremely helpful to your jurisdiction as you try to move your retail program forward. And you try to work hard at protecting the public health like you do every day. Hopefully, this can make it a little bit easier, right, to give direction and and some funding to assist you in doing that. I had mentioned that information changes quite quickly as we're working on these activities. Just today, I have the the final dates for the portal opening. So you all will be the first to hear it, and then, of course, additional information will start to roll out. September 1st, registration will open. Remember, this is a new portal. So if you've registered for other things in the past, ERA Commons or through our our wonderful partner, AFTO, or whoever it might be, you know, through NACO, when they've done their mentorship program, you'll have to register. And registration, you know, is who's the responsible party? And what's the name of your organization? And those types of things to make sure that's all set. It can take a couple of days to get that registration going, so we want to open that first to make sure we're not fretting about that part of it, that everybody's able to get in, get access before the portal opens. On September 9th, Nihal will open the FDA Retail Flexible Funding Model Grant, right, for your ability to apply. That is September 9th, and then it will close on November 15th. Please be aware, we're here to help. If you could pass that word on to anybody else that will hear your voice, we're here to help. We have a lot of information we could share, both FDA and Nihal. We're working together to get that information out to you. So please don't hesitate to reach out. I noticed that in the chat box, the the Nihal site is on there for people to use. Hope and the 1-800 number and the email. Thank you so much. We won't list every retail food specialist, but you you know who yours is, and then you can look on FDA's website for that information. But you can go over and register your email to get, you know, firsthand information when it comes out about where we are in the process for the application portion of the grant. So I wish you all the best of success. We want you to have a successful time at this. We want this to be beneficial for your program. We want this to be beneficial for public health. And if there's anything that we can do to ease the burden, the anxiety, the, you know, excitement, whatever it is that that you are trying to work on in your neck of the woods, please don't hesitate to reach out so that we can assist you as best we can to make this a successful process. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary Beth, and hopefully you folks take a look at the the website. We, as she said, we did provide the link to the website, an email, and a phone number as well. So check it out. All right, our final speaker today is Andre Pierce. Andre Pierce is the Director of the Wake County Environmental Health and Safety Division in Raleigh, North Carolina. And I I want to make mention, we've kept the bios very brief. If you are interested in learning more about any of the speakers, check them out on Pathable. You can also use a message function if you have some additional questions that we don't get answered or addressed at the end of the workshop. So I'm going to have Julie go ahead and share the presentation with the the last set of slides. Again, welcome, Andre, and he is going to be talking about our self-assessment and audit verification summary and gap analysis tool.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Everything good? Okay. As we all know that are here today, continuous quality improvement assures that our programming stays effective and we keep up with food safety and innovation. By keeping current, it keeps our staff and our communities engaged, and it keeps our programming fresh and relevant. It assures our our staff are knowledgeable, providing consistent messages. Therefore, we're credible and hopefully get buy-in from operators acting as a consultants like we want to be. And ultimately, we are looking for operators to be actively managing their programs and delivering that good food safety to their consumers. The Retail Program Standards has nine standards that outline the best practices and excellent retail inspection programs, as you're aware. And there's a website that we've all been talking about today out there that has all these materials. And that is, if you just Google FDA Retail Program Standards, all that information will be there. And Carrie, if you've got that email, if you've got that URL, if you'll post it in the chat, that'd be great. Today, we're going to be talking about the Self-Assessment Audit Verification Summary and Gap Analysis Tool, which is an Excel spreadsheet that was created by FDA some time ago. In addition to the forms on FDA's retail program site, this is an additional tool that helps jurisdictions track where they are in the standards. It helps jurisdictions look to see where they want to prioritize their work. And it's a good way to show this information to decision-makers. So today's objectives for my little brief talk are, number one, is to show the evaluation tool for the self-assessment and verification. Describe how it is a decision-making tool for prioritizing your work with the standards, showing how it consolidates information in one place to make the elements all be clear to you, communicate your information to to decision-makers, and also feed into how this tool can really help you guide where you want to direct your comprehensive strategy, which will play into the fall, the flexible spending model. I want to talk, just be sure to let everyone know that this is an additional tool. It's not required. So but it's out there, and it's on that website. It's already posted out there. All right, let's go to the next slide. As I said, the website is current with the program standards. It lists all the forms you've heard from me with all the forms, all the guidance documents that are out there. It has the clearinghouse information. It has just everything you need to know about the standards. The, this program standards, as you also know, are vetted and and kept through the CFP process, which you'll be hearing some issues that come to change the standards or to to make some edits to the standards next week. It's, again, we, the tracking of all this information, these nine standards is very important. So there's, let's go ahead. So there's, let's go ahead and move on to the next one. Let me just drill down and show a couple of different standards. These, these forms that you're seeing on the screen now are the PDF versions from the website. Now, they're the official 508 compliant versions of the worksheets. And as you know, I'm showing standard seven and standard five here. Standard seven, there are different elements in each of the standards. Standard seven has two elements. If you're familiar with that standard, it's got an industry and consumer interaction portion of it. And it's got an educational outreach portion. Whereas, or as compared to standard five, it has 25 elements, over five pages of that form. They're very, they're much more specific and granular. Not to say they're any standards more important than the other, but it's got this different nature of the elements in each of the standards. That can be somewhat confusing for new enrollees and it could be, you know, trying to get your head around those different elements based on the different standards. Each line on the form lists those elements. And it provides space for you to put your self-assessment, general comments to list your evidences. And then the right side of the forums, as you know, has a place for the auditor to go and verify that those evidences match, you know, match for that element to check it off. So again, you have nine standards with varying lists of elements to evaluate and to verify. The background on the spreadsheet that I'm going to be talking about, during some discussions with the CFP Program Standards Subcommittee, some of the participants of the subcommittees were aware that there's a Microsoft Excel spreadsheet out there that was created by one of the FDA specialists. They were aware that it had been very helpful for that jurisdiction to consolidate their information and evaluate their progress and then communicated to audiences such as the Budget Office in their jurisdiction or their Board of Health. So that, that was an, that's where this, one of the issues that we're going to be talking about next week came up. The Program Standards Subcommittee thought that this tool was so valuable that it should be brought up as an issue to conference for food protection. Next slide. This just gives you a brief overview of what the tool looks like. It's a spreadsheet. It's an Excel spreadsheet. It has 11 tabs. The first one basically gives instructions for how to use it. The second one shown here is a summary tab for the other nine tabs to basically consolidate this information. Each of the tabs mirrors the 508 compliant form that's on the FDA website. So it's nothing extremely different. It's just a different format of how to look at it. Again, notice there are different elements. If you look in this list, you'll see standard one. There's one, two, three, seven elements. As you see five, there's, and standard five there, there are 29. It's cut off, but that's what there is. It shows that. Again, this is a second, this is another tool. It's got your jurisdiction name, your report, the dates. It allows you to keep those, your audit person, your auditor's name, your name, when you do the audits, et cetera, in one place. It's just a secondary tool. So now I want to look at a hypothetical example of a jurisdiction's work as we look at the next slide. Okay, this is just a hypothetical of the jurisdiction's work on this slide. This has, this has listed on the left, the element that you have to, you have to meet. There's questions about it. You can look in the guidance documents. And if there's further questions, there's a clearinghouse document that's also on that single website. It also lists the columns for the self-assessment, SA met, yes or no. It allows you to put your evidences and you can list all those down there. And then those are all done by the self-assessor throughout this exercise for the standard. It's very important in the standard, if you, if you would mark, in this example, it says met, yes. But if you don't mean it, it's very, very important for you to list everything that you have and maybe list what you're missing, because this is going to help drive your work for what you want to do down the road and create your comprehensive strategic improvement plan. The beauty of this, the beauty of the same form, the same document, the Microsoft Excel form, is it has formulas that pre-populate information across tabs on the sheet. And again, as I showed in the previous slide, it's got an area at the very top that lists all the demographic information for you. So at the end of the day, it rolls up or it provides a visual at the front of the sheet. And let's go to the next slide and we can show that. As you go through and mark your accomplishments with each of those elements in the standards, you'll notice as you work through, the way the sheet works, if you complete an element of this, then it turns it, it turns it black with a strike through. If you have pending work in any of these elements or any of these sections, it leaves it red. That's basically the principle of this document. So you're, you're working off the nine tabs and it's rolling the information up to the single place to look at, which is very helpful. And I'll throw in a little bit of humor. Someone said on the, someone said, gave a quote to the Rolling Stones lyric, "I see a red door and I want to paint it black." So basically, that's the way this works. You see a red area and it helps you, helps you direct some of your energy and effort toward that area. Now, it's going to, it's going to be different for jurisdictions as to what they want to do. You've got a varying number of elements across the standards. So as a jurisdiction, you'll be able to use the tool, see what's missing, plan what you want to work on next, communicate it to your, to your decision makers, your upper management, et cetera. But that helps you, helps you decide what you want to do. Let me give an example in North Carolina. On standard one, counties in North Carolina do the, do the retail inspection work in the facilities. The state makes the rules. So we don't have, as a county, we don't have a lot of control with the regulatory foundation standard. Now, that's not to say we can't do something about it. But that, so what we did on this standard in North, in Wake County is we went to our Board of Health and got a letter of recommendation to send to the state. So we, what we can do on that standard is try to, you know, promote the code, do what we can and try to affect it as much as we can. I'm proud to say that North Carolina is adopting the newer version of the code in October. So that's what we could do for that standard. And hopefully, we'll see in, on our, on our self-assessment in the fall, you'll see that be over on the left side, say yes, and all those little indicators on the right be marked black. Okay, we can go to the end, the last slide. So we brought this, we brought this, this issue to CFP, which was planned to be last year. It's this year. It's 2-20. You'll see it in the packets. What I can say is, very fortunately, this has already been posted on the website. So there'll be, it'll be presented as it's required and no action will be recommended because it's already been done. What I'll close with is just saying that what I see are the benefits of this tool as an alternative. It provides a single location to keep track of your information. So it's all consolidated. All the elements are in that document. It's got the names of who did it and verified it, et cetera. It's a great communication tool, provides you a single place to be able to show that single document in percentages, something that's really simple to communicate. It helps you look at your overall progress. And based on what you can control and the number of elements may help you decide where you want to focus your effort. And finally, it's a great communication tool. It's a great means for you to, to direct your comprehensive strategic improvement plan and direct your work so that you continue the good work of this, of this program. And with that, that's all I've got.
Thank you so much, Andre, and I will just definitely echo what you have said. When I discovered this document existed a few, it's probably been a few years back now. I was just floored at how useful it was and it helped us out so much just to see where we were with some of the standards. And, you know, it's kind of like you, before we were looking at it like, no, we don't meet this, we don't meet this. But then when we put in to play this, we were like, wow, yeah, we don't need it, but we're really close. And look, we're at 80%. So it's a great tool and again, Carrie put the link in the chat. So you guys, if you have not seen this tool, please check it out. I want to just thank all of our speakers for presenting today and serving on this panel. And I also want to especially thank Carrie for putting this together. I mean, her, both of our names are on this, but I'm going to tell you, I'm not taking much credit for it because she did the majority of the legwork, so I want to give her a big shout out. We do definitely have some time for questions. So actually, first what we'll do is we'll give everyone, we'll get everyone to do a reaction for Carrie, a clap. And I just gave a little woo-hoo. So good job, Carrie. If you do have a question though, if you could, oh, great. Now I'm going to be confused because I'm going to see the hand claps and then I'm going to tell everyone to raise their hand. But if you do have a question, if you could use the raise hand feature, and we do have some time for questions, so it looks like at the top, and I do have one question from chat, so I'm actually going to read that question first and then I'll go over to Dr. McSwain. Mary Beth, this question is for you, so I'm hoping there's so many people on this call. But, um, Mary Beth, the next question is for you. It's talking about the flexible funding portal. And it's asking, is this a totally new portal to apply or will we have to go through ERA Commons? If it is a new portal, will we have to have multiple accounts for the PIs, the SOs, et cetera? Mary Beth, if you're on, if you can answer, I think, let me see if you're still on. I know I can answer part of it. It is definitely a brand new portal. I am not sure about the answer to the PIs and SOs rants. Do you think you could take that one?
It is much simpler than the, than trying to run in through ERA Commons. So it's running off of the flux model, which is very similar to ones that's used before. So pretty much the same information that you had historically put in it. The same platform that you, that was used historically is also being used on this one as well. So it's just going to, you don't have to have sign-in information for a lot of people on there. It's going to ask you who your point of contact is. It's going to ask you who your authorizing officer is. And once you put your information in there and the point of contact, it's going to send them a, their password to get in to the site and put it in there. So it's a simple process. The grant is much more complicated than it's historically been. There is no, there is no set funds available. There's an up to funds that's available, but, but the actual signing into it is really simple. So I do recommend people go in September 1, go in before you actually start applying for the grant and sign in at that point.
Thank you. Dr. McSwain, did you have a question?
No, I was just testing that raise hand feature.
Great. Okay, I do see another question in the chat. And the question is, can the tool that Andre talked about, can that be used as the comprehensive strategic plan? And I'm assuming they're asking about for the flexible funding?
So Carrie, this rant, again, I might be able to answer that one as well. It's the tool that's used to determine what will be in the comprehensive strategic improvement plan. And so that's the, that's the area where you look to see what elements are missing there so that you make a choice on how to fix those elements. FDA has some examples. As a matter of fact, I think we have an example of a template that you can use, but there is no required form for, for the template. It just needs to be, what's my action plan for, for how, what's my timeline and action plan for meeting those elements of these standards that I'm not currently meeting?
Thank you. So I'm not showing any more questions in chat, I don't think. And I don't see anyone having their hands raised. Carrie, do you see anything on your end?
No, I am not seeing questions nor hands raised. So we did build in a lot of time for questions and answers. But if there are no more questions, we can give it another minute or so to see if somebody is, has a burning question they want answered.
Oh, there we go. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, this isn't really a question. It's just a comment that I would like to share with the group. In honor of World Elephant Day, which was yesterday, by the way, in case anybody has a fascination of elephants. When I used to be in the regulatory world, I looked at the program standards as this gigantic elephant that was very overwhelming, very intimidating. And at the time, back in those days, we really didn't have a lot of support. It was just, here you go. And I think with the collaborative and CFP and NHO and Nihah and all FDA, all these efforts, it helps you. The question is, how do you eat an elephant? And it's not all at once. It's one bite at a time. So I would encourage people that are looking at the program standards as this big elephant that truly you can break it down into little bites and it is quite achievable. And I think that with all the efforts that we're working here today together, we can help each other meet, you know, meeting these standards. It's just going to, you know, like Lori Farmer said, exponential improvements into food safety. So I just come on to share my little philosophy there.
Great words of wisdom for sure. Thank you. Dr. McSwain?
I might like to dovetail on one, what Elizabeth said, only bring it more specifically to CFP. And certainly Carrie, you and Angie and others can probably address this better than I can. But I did want to make everyone who's viewing this session today understand that CFP has a standing committee that deals specifically with the retail food program standards. And if, you know, as part of the committee application process that will occur electronically, you write at the conclusion of our biennial meeting on August the 20th, we will be soliciting volunteers to serve on all of our council and standing committees. So if you have anybody in the audience that would like to be more actively involved, CFP literally has worked hand in hand with FDA on the standards from their, really their creation. John Marcello and I co-chaired the committees and we're working on that back in the 90s. So it's, we're not the new kids on the block, if you will. We've been, been at this for a long time, but there's a lot of work still to be done. And we would appreciate anyone who would like to bring some new energies to, to the committee. And again, you can certainly contribute to the work of the committee without being a member of the committee as well. So I would just simply encourage anyone who has more than a casual interest about the standards and would like to be involved through CFP at least, I would encourage them to sign up when the, when the process occurs later on this month.
Thank you. Okay, last chance for questions. Just a reminder, Monday, we start with our opening session for CFP at 10:30 Eastern. So again, we are really looking forward to seeing everyone then and have a fun weekend reading through all the issues and getting prepared for next week. I know that's what I'm going to be doing. And thank you again to all of our speakers and to Carrie for putting this together.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. And I'm hoping in 2023 to see all of your smiling faces in person.
Bye, everyone.